Okay.
All right.
Again, okay. This class, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to everybody here tonight. Just a reminder of our mission statement. East Bay County Schools Empower All Students to Become Productive Responsible Citizens of An Ever-Changing Global Society. I believe we do not have any changes to the agenda for tonight, so that would be come take a motion. Second, for the approval of the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You want to make a consent?
Anybody have any question on the two sets of minutes of the financial statement?
That first page on the JMC?
Yep.
Is that a ongoing annual fee?
That's an annual fee for our student database system, our grades and scheduling and all of that. It gets broke down by building, I believe, or is it just elementary, middle school, high school best?
By building and then by module too, so usually by...
And you'll see a similar bill or the same company in the nutrition portion, and that's because we use it for all of our hot lunch.
That's similar, obviously, John, you know?
That's about seventeen hundred, I think, in nutrition.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so... Also on that page at the top, there's Card Member Services and some technology supplies for repairs, some fuel, some conference registration, so a number of things on that there. On down, the biggest bill there, obviously, is Iowa Central Community College, that's for college tuition.
Is that a semester?
Yeah. Question? There may be an additional one coming for the online portion.
Oh, yeah.
Because they have two, it comes in two portions, online and then the ones that we teach here, five hours. So... This, that's Iowa School Finance and Information Service. They provide services, a little bit similar to IASB. We use them, well, they give us a weekly webinar to keep us up to date on current events. We use them for our background checks. And I use Larry Siegel, the founder of it, pretty exclusively for financial recommendations and information. He's done a nice job for us, so... I feel it's a little bit of a duplication with the IASB one that we did last month, but at this point, I still think it's worth the money we're spending for that. On the next page, there in the top third, you'll see school specialties for three to four hundred. We're starting to get all of next fall's orders done, the home spring orders, but staff's ordering things for next fall, and we try to get that all taken care of and done in this fiscal year, so we're often ready to go around. So that's what's going on there.
Star Energy, that bus is charming.
That is, absolutely, yeah. I don't know if that one was propane or diesel fuel, but yeah, it's for transportation. Card Member Services with some FFA and, I believe, tree leading lodging for, I don't know if they had their contest or if they were at state basketball performing or something, and then some co-op expense, so that'd be greenhouse expense. And then a little farther down, the ninety-four hundred for National FFA Organization. That's their leadership conference, that in the summer, Kevin.
Mm-hmm.
So they prepay on that, and if there's students that don't go, it is refunded, so...
Do you know that they get a discount for prepaying early?
No, I don't know. I don't know.
I'm into that.
Ooh, you're not sure. What do you...
You should have got the manual.
Yeah. Yeah.
Say, how many? Isn't this the Washington D.C. trip?
The one in summer? Yeah, it's a D.C. trip.
Yeah.
Oh, there's not that many for, no, that's leadership conference. There's probably...
This is more like one or two van loads.
Yeah. I'm not sure how many, yeah. State convention they're at right now?
It's twenty-three.
Is twenty-seven or twenty-eight, something like that, yeah. They're out there today and tomorrow.
And then the bottom portion there, anybody have anything highlighted on the city fund? I guess the only thing out of the ordinary there would be the softball scoreboard, so that makes us pretty current on all of our scoreboards. We shouldn't have seen anything unless something, whether the storm or something, but...
Half on boosters.
No, we paid the whole thing this time. We offered. We offered just both. Marco, we've just been replacing copiers as they wear out, and that one wore out, so... We, the middle school now has the oldest copier. Let's see how it...
I've started buying them all at once, as well, too. I'll apologize if I have to.
Do you have any else? All right. Well, I didn't retain a motion to approve the minutes, financial report, and those won't count.
So move consecutive.
Those in favor approving the three consecutive items?
Aye.
Move on to the board's superintendent report.
First thing I agree part on is we're still taking applications for some of our TLC positions. We have two mentors, seven model and five PLC coach positions open, and we opened that up last week for a couple of weeks. With the current staff that we hired with our TLC money, we're estimating about two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, and that'll change when SSA and everything sort of gets finalized, but it's a per pupil, not a per pupil basis, but our estimate was a little over two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. We will have spent, right now, about two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars on the employees for next year that we will have hired. Either that would be that full-time position, the three half-times, and then some very small, short-time positions. And so when we hire this next group of teachers, I'll just give you an update again, so of the two-hundred-and-eighty, we spent about two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand so far, but we're just going to be careful with that to make sure that we don't overspend in that area. Since we've opened it up again, I'd say that I have had ten or twelve inquiry, wanting applications, so I think we're going to fill the model and PLC coaching positions, and we had at least one person interested in the mentoring, and we can, mentoring would work with one if that's, if that's what we end up with, so that's in pretty good shape.
Would you refresh my memory? You said you listed how many applicants and how many people we hired. Would you tell me, seven out of ten, or how many are we looking for, I guess?
We, we wanted two mentors, and we're still looking for two.
Okay.
Model teachers, we wanted eight, and we're looking for seven.
Still looking for seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
And PLC coaches, we wanted ten, and we're looking for five. For the model teacher positions, I sat down with the three half-time teachers, those coaches, and one of the descriptors of their job is that they are model teachers. So we've already talked through the fact that if we don't get seven more, we've got three built down right away, so we're, we're going to be fine however this goes. The three half-time, well, two of the three half-time and the full-time person, and I went to do one last week to a state conference, and it was all of the schools that will be implementing next year for the first year. There were just about a thousand of us there. And we each went to different sessions, and then in the afternoon, we worked on planning, but when we came back after lunch, at every session we'd been to in the morning, it was the same conversation that schools are, it's slow to get people to fill positions. And almost, I sat at a table with four other schools, a 3A, another 2A, and a couple of 1A schools, and all of them had the same problems, just filling positions, but now they've reopened, and people are applying, and so it just, it sounds as if that's just pretty normal and pretty natural. So, anyway, that's where we're, we're at currently with that situation. I've spoken with you before about the academy through Iowa Central Community College, and President Vice President Board went with me to South Central Capoei District, and we had lunch at Lake City at the hospital. In a couple of weeks, I'm going to take the high school principal and high school counselor with me, that's kind of to that next move. And just last week, Neil Adams, one of the VPs at Iowa Central, said to all of our superintendent's group, just kind of tentative, here might be a strand that we'd offer, and here's, of course, the slide we're committing, and of course, this is draft across all of that, okay? And he urged us at this point not to even talk at our school board meetings about what those tracks might be, but he said, just thinking about the size of schools and the number of students, we're thinking maybe eighty students in the academy versus the hundred-and-twenty that that set of bigger schools have. Iowa Central did say they are talking about the possibility of building a building. They cannot find a building. So, but that's going to take a vote for them, and they have something already ready for a vote next fall, so he said, we might just attach it to that, but I think when we meet again, that the President of Iowa Central will probably firm that up with us just a little. That isn't their first choice, but he thinks they found a building around the Pocahontas area, so he said, if we only had to build one rather than build two or three, they can manage that, they just can't do three new buildings in three sites. Jefferson Scranton has decided to stay with our group, and the nice part about that is it just brings some more kids in, so that it makes it a little easier on all the rest of us as far as numbers. Otherwise, we were probably going to be looking at asking, like, our district for twenty students. Now we can probably be asked to bring fifteen, and then if we had more than fifteen, we could buy seats if there are empty seats. And I think everyone kind of had a, kind of breathed a sigh of relief that, okay, that seems more manageable for all of us. Some smaller schools than us would have ten, and then Jefferson Scranton maybe like the twenty, and then there's a bunch of us the same size that would probably do the fifteen seats. So it's starting to sort of take a little bit of form, we're probably still three years away, but everybody's staying in the group, so every meeting we have, we had one last month, we can have one again in May, it still just keeps kind of chugging along, so that's the good news, I think. Then we, sort of related to that is that we have those, that bundle of days of professional development at the end of the year because of snow and that weather, and we are going to make, well, I guess we approached Iowa Central about bringing all of our faculty, which would be just about eighty teachers, to Iowa Central, because one of the problems that we really have K-12 is the fact that our teachers went to K-12, and then went to a four-year university, then they came back to K-12. So they don't really have, unless they're an atypical student, like the Greg, yeah, this might be one of those, but that's not very typical to have that kind of career path as a teacher. They don't really get community colleges really all that well. So we're loading everyone up if they want to ride a bus, or, no matter what, we're starting at nine o'clock on May twenty-fifth is one of the PD days. The president will greet us, will have some information from what they call their intermediary network people about externships and internships, they'll have a workforce panel to talk about employability skills, because what we think is, we talk about employability skills, but our teachers are sort of like, well, community college can fix that, and then the community college says, well, why in the world didn't high school fix all of this? So we'll have a workforce panel, they'll have two sets of tours going, so we'll divide our group in half, and there's a group that will go off-campus to some work sites, and then a group that will stay on-campus for a tour, and then those will switch an hour later. They'll provide lunch for us, and we're doing academic roundtables, so it might be that we had a table of five to six of our staff of varying grades and content areas, and then two or three of their faculty, but it's more that conversation about expectations in schools compared to expectations in community colleges, and more dialogue that's more face-to-face at the table rather than a panel standing up in front of everyone and talking. Then closing remarks from the academic deans, and we're on our way by two-thirty. We have asked them in the following year if we can do the same thing for a day at the end of the year, but this time, teachers would be in smaller groups, and they would do like a job shadowing day. So they might go, for instance, with someone like a Jay, and there might be three teachers assigned him, and they just follow him all day long, but they're kind of conversation starters about, here's things that we do here, and here's why we've got to find employees that can do X, X, and X. And the only reason we would go to Fort Dodge to do it is because they have, we could go to one central location, and they could find employers for us, but certainly if we suggested we'd like to stay out here, I think they'd find those people for us. I mean, they are not necessarily keen on just having to do this in Fort Dodge. So we're trying to do something this year to start that thinking, and then the following year to follow it up with something as well, so that's one of our PD days at least. The academy, professional development, teacher leadership, board priorities. We have had a heck of a time between Jay and Amanda and me being able to find any time to get together. So last week, I called Iowa Association of School, well, Jackie got involved saying she could take Amanda's place because of Amanda's work schedule, and then Jay works six a.m., sits beyond now, and we were like, this isn't working, so we had to figure out just kind of another plan. So I called IASB on Friday and worked with them on something. I'm going to give you this sheet, and then I'm going to email this to you so you can do it electronically, because often, we can't read your writing.
She was looking at me.
I was probably advised to all of us. I was looking at the table top.
Okay. So what we're talking about is setting the priorities for the board before we set, before we had to go set. The mission statement of the district is on here, because you're, you're to be thinking of that mission statement as you make these choices below. And actually, IASB does this when they go out to work with schools, and I'm like, Barb, we don't have to come out with you, you can do this with your, your board. So you are to choose to allocate your resources, you have a hundred dollars, and you only have it in two different ways. You have a hundred-dollar bill, or you have eighty dollars and twenty dollars, that you can spend in two ways. But you don't have, you don't have two hundred dollars, you have one hundred dollars. And the bullets below are your choices, okay? First bullet, increase, so what you're doing is sort of putting your money where your own personal emphasis is for the priorities of the district. So if you look at this and say, there's only one of these that's the most important to me, you're putting your hundred dollars on that. If you say, well, there's one that's way important, and then another one that ranks less than that, then you do an eighty, twenty. And then below, what you'll do is explain why you decided to do what you did based on the mission statement of the district. So you're going back to the mission statement to think about that, but your choices are, bullet one, increase in course offerings of programming to better meet a wide variety of individual needs. Second bullet, inform community engagement with and knowledge of the school district's needs and strengths. Third one, solid fiscal security. Fourth one, quality professional development focused on improving structure instruction. Next one, infrastructure development, buildings, buses, equipment updating from, it can be anything from air conditioning, and this, this is their language, not mine, to a zippy new trap.
You didn't come up with that, Barb?
No. Not like me, doesn't.
I wouldn't have guessed that.
Technology, increasing the use of technology to improve higher-level learning, and then you can write a choice if you don't see what you want in there. So you're either going to choose one and put your hundred dollars on it, or you're going to choose an eighty and a twenty, and then whatever you choose in the spot down below, then you're going to indicate which, where's your eighty dollars, or where's your twenty, and then why. These will be, I'll compile them with no names, and just mark the eighties, the twenties, the hundreds, and then what your rationale was, whether, I'll email this to you as well as to Amanda, and then you get it returned in the next week or ten days. And I'll probably bug you if you don't, well, I know I will, because if we go way too late, and we kind of forget the gist of it, and it doesn't take a ton of directions, but then you'll be asking, well, what am I supposed to do again, and how does this work, and whatever. So you're thinking back on the mission statement, you need either an eighty or a twenty, or it's the one hundred, and why, it's just that simple. I was cautioned to advise you of this, that it's great to put solid fiscal security, but then sometimes that means cutting teachers, sometimes it means cutting programs, and so when you say that, it's to think about, so what, this happens, but then what's the cost of having done that? Okay, it impacts something else, and then can I live with those kinds of things? If I put all hundred dollars on solid fiscal security in our business, okay, what it does is it impacts a list of other things, and then can you live with that? Okay, so just with each one of those items, think about that. For technology, it doesn't say necessarily that we're buying more, it's talking about increasing the use of technology and the money that it takes to do that in time with teachers and professional development. So just sort of think through that, and it's easy enough to do because they all have side effects to them. Okay? I think the directions are simple to do, but I think it'll sort itself out, and they assured me that in every board they've worked with, that sort of sorts the board's priorities, and then you can start talking about, so now where should the goals be? Okay, and I will send it soon.
Perfect. Thank you.
End of my report.
Okay. Any unfinished business? Okay, move on to seven A, discussing our approved resolution authorizing bids for the parking lot.
Oh, just in time.
Just right.
Just to hit the board kind of up to date, what you're doing that day. Jane Cessel, remember, we talked about it last year a little bit, and then a couple months ago, I mentioned to the board if we wanted to pursue prices again, and the answer was yes, just informally amongst the board. Due to the size of the project, anything over a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar public improvement requires an engineer to be on board.
Yep.
And so we took bids from a couple engineers and accepted a bid from Snyder and Associates and Mr. Stern, and that's where we're at tonight.
Well, he's got you up to date, and as he mentioned, my name is Dave Stern, for those of you I don't know. I know Chris. We did get plans and specs finished for this project, and what I just handed to you was the cost estimate that we put together that shows paving of the entire parking lot, as well as the two driveways that go out to the west gravel driveway, so that total with a five percent contingency that we added is just under three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand for our estimate. And basically, that project is going to pave that entire parking lot, it doesn't really expand it any at all, it just is paving of what you have, so there will be no more stalls, no additional drainage added to the site, you use your existing drainage and everything, so it's a pretty basic project, but due to the amount, you did have to get it engineered, and we plan to go out for bids on May thirteenth. Well, if you guys do approve this resolution tonight, and we will also hold a public hearing at your next, at next board meeting to get that party going, so... Are there any questions about the project? I do have plans and specs that I'm going to leave here for you guys to review, and I'll leave those with John and whoever else wants a copy, so...
What's item number three, Dave?
Item three is, basically, you have a gravel parking lot right now that's uneven, puddles, and is also for removing the rock at the existing curb, we're going to salvage the curb on the north, excuse me, the east and the south sides, so we need to pull back six inches of rock so we can make room for the pavement. But we also need to basically shape the entire lot.
So you're going to take all that rock off of there?
No, minor shaping, minor shaping and grating.
Oh, okay.
Yep. All we're taking, we're taking six inches of rock at the curb and across twenty-five feet, tapering that down to nothing, and using that rock to fill holes and do some fine grating across the entire site. So that's for... John, you remember how deep that, because there's a mat out there. I don't know if you know how deep's that mat now.
Some places it's worked to the top, some places it's still, I don't know, it was eight inches, I think, at first.
Yeah, there'll be spots where we probably get into that, they'll just have to cut it out. But the intent is to pave on top of the rest of the rock where possible, and then bring in just top soil to backfill the new curb and the new, the new driveways.
Is this paved in the driveways, too?
Yes. Item five is the PC concrete. We base this estimate on our experience of past projects similar to this. You may get a better number, I've been informed, there's a couple local guys that are pretty interested in this that could give a better number than what we typically see when we do public bids, but local guys generally are cheaper, so this is based on our going rates right now, so it could come in less than that.
It hasn't been history around here lately?
Yeah, I don't...
For the cities on the old.
We've seen, we've seen a dramatic increase in cost in concrete over the last three years. You know, three years ago, we were getting the square yard price for thirty-two, thirty-four, now it's, for our street paving, it's been around forty-six. We expect this to come in around forty, just because it's a six inches to the seven, and it's actually quite a large job that a contractor, you'll get some good bids on this. Any questions about the project? So if we take all the bids, and this may be, whoever can answer, we take the bids, we don't like the bids, can we ask for more bids? Yes. You, you can reject all bids and go to rebid at any time. This is not, I'll beat you to anything.
It doesn't generally work out very well, though. I understand that.
Going to a rebid, you're not going to get...
Now, if you want to reject them, that's fine, but if you're going to reject and rebid, it's going to come in higher.
You mean like the, even the existing, the...
Strictly cost inflation, labor, I mean, the project itself isn't going to change. We're not going to go with the thinner concrete, we're not really going to do anything different. It would just be, the only thing that may be to an advantage if you were, get really bad bids now and rebid in February and do it next year, but I know that wasn't the intent here, so... Just because contractors are starting to fill up with a, with a May bid letting, it's getting a little late in the year, but this is, this is what we have to play with right now, so...
And this is kind of awkward, maybe not necessarily directed to you, but just giving some thought to this over the past couple weeks, is this something that we want to jump into right now without having what I would consider a facilities plan? I, I think we have a lot to think through. I know Mr. Fisher commented the last couple meetings about class sizes becoming an issue and allocating teachers amongst buildings and things like that, so I, I guess before we would jump into spending close to four-hundred thousand, should we evaluate what our long-range plan is? Or have a plan? I mean, I know our numbers are really good right now, which thankfully they are, because there's a lot of people right now having meetings probably laying off a lot of teachers, and we don't have to do that, but should we be proactive in our approach a little bit instead of reactive when we end up in that situation? Just throwing that out there for...
I think, I think that's a good point. I don't think it's going to hurt for us to approve the resolution that we have at hand and to go ahead with getting bids, but I do think that's a good point, I think you're making a good point, because I would much rather be proactive than reactive, I think it's cheaper in the long run to be proactive.
Yeah, I would say, my thought too is if we were to expand on this building, I would think the most logical would be to go west, so...
Do we still have those drawings that we got done? Or five?
The answer would be yes, I don't know.
I would say I would... It's a time that I was on.
No, that was quite a few years ago, though, so...
I have some, Chris, in my office.
You do?
You want them?
Well, I just think maybe it would be a good, you know, have these guys look at it, because we did actually do some work on that at one time, and it was that way and that way, kind of, so...
I just would hate to put this in, and then if our enrollment continues to decline and we have to do something, then we have to either rip this out or we just, I mean, I under, I, I totally agree we need to do it. I mean, the parking lot needs paved, that's not the question, I don't think, that I have right here, it's just a matter of the timing and if we have a plan of attack, if we need it.
So what is your thought about the resolution? Would you rather not do the resolution, or, I mean, it's not going to cost us any more?
I mean, that, that part doesn't, I mean, that doesn't bother me, I guess I just think that I'd have a hard time approving the project at this moment without doing some checking into these drawings, or at least talk about what our game plan is, but as far as the resolution goes, kind of worth it.
I would recommend continuing on this. If, if we delay another board meeting, you're probably not going to get it done this summer. If we don't take bids till June, you're not going to get a contractor in here until August, and we're getting a little late to them, to try to, if you do, you decide to do it.
Right.
Yeah, we can, we can reject.
You can reject all bids.
I guess that's...
If in a month, you guys review your stuff and it's not going to work out right, you can reject all bids and move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem if we continue, you know, to obtain what that information would be, I just have a little bit of hesitancy about, right now, about spending that much money.
How long do you think it'll take to do this?
We gave them twenty working days, I don't anticipate it taking that long, though. Working days are basically any day they can work, a weekday, or when it's not raining, something like that, or conditions are acceptable for work. Sure. Is there, is there a timeframe that if we go into this, I know a lot of times with, like, highways, this and that, if they don't have it finished by a certain date, there's a penalty? Yes. We, we have set the late start date as July fifth, the late start date is a date that a contractor has to start by, and their working days start counting against them. Once they go over twenty working days, we have it set in this project as a thousand dollars per working day, if they go over, they would be charged in what's called liquidated damages, and we have that in all our contracts.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll say second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will leave. I will leave both of these copies here for you to review, John, if you want.
Yeah, that's fine.
Whoever wants to look at them, so.
Feel free to get in touch with me then.
Yeah.
By email for all of our.
Yeah, I need to email you now, the, the publication that has to be published in the paper.
And you'll give them dates when it needs to be.
Yep.
Good, keep us out of trouble.
You bet.
Don't make it that easy for him. You'd never do that for me.
I do, too.
Sorry you had to drive all the way up here.
No, that's, that's no problem.
Maybe you can go have dinner with some.
I'm gonna stop and see my grandma.
That's right.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Take everybody.
Moving on to letter D, discuss an approved 2016 graduate.
I think you have a list of graduates in your board packet and any completion of the requirements, satisfactory, satisfactorily completing those, that's the list of students that we recommend to you for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the graduates listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bus purchase.
There's three pages in your packet regarding school buses. Let's start with that third page, and that's just a list of our current fleet. Looks like seven, I think it's one through 17, 17 school buses. Phil's plan would be to trade in, I believe that's numbers five and six, when this bus, if approved, would show up. These buses are out about six months right now, so if we approve this tonight, we're probably looking at it in November or December delivery. That's why, this is a little earlier than I planned on bringing it to you, but with the timeframe, so. Then you can see what we use our buses for, either diesel or propane, so. The other consideration, this would be our, looks like our seventh propane bus, and we're gonna have to start giving consideration to a, a separate propane filling station in Lakeview, because all, right now, we're able to get all of our buses to SAC either by a regular route or shuttle route and fill them at our station there. But a filling station costs us, Phil said 15,000 roughly, and maybe a little extra to put some fence around with our poor pad, but if we keep going with propane as a consideration, we're gonna have to deal with, we're not built this summer.
What did you tell me today that our propane is gonna cost us for last year?
We contracted 83 or 88 cents of our contract price, and then I do a clean fuel rebate with the government for 50 cents, so our net price on fuel this year is maybe 33 or 38 cents.
We're like, $2 diesel?
Yeah, we're, we're still saving, depends on how you want, play the numbers and what prices you use, but we're saving five or 10,000 a bus, you know, on a freight cost, so.
I talked to Phil today, and he said that the Thomas bus is what he would recommend. Obviously, it's cheaper, but John wants to get the all, all the same bus.
Three years ago, we bought, two Bluebirds and two Thomases, and the consensus among Phil and the drivers is they prefer the Thomases, so. The second bid is from Holman, they're a little higher priced. The last bus we bought was right around 90,000 also.
Was it?
Yeah, yeah. So, if we approve the bid from Thomas, which is our recommendation, it'll be 89, 691, and we'll trade those two in at the time, so the actual check will be less, but we purchased here, approving this.
And we're not gonna lease this one at all, we're just gonna pay for it.
We're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea what the trade-in on the other two are?
Last time, they were about 10, they were worth about $10,000, so hopefully, we can get this down around 70, actual cost. Don't quote me on that.
I think I remember last time being 79 with the trade-in.
Yep, and then we got 2,000 less than that because of, they, we let them use it all summer to demo the state as a propane bus, so we got a dollar a mile on. So, the check I wrote was 77.
I'd make a motion that we purchase the Thomas bus.
Is there a second?
Propane.
All those in favor purchasing that propane Thomas bus?
Aye.
Moving on to summer projects list.
All right. May you, you want me to do this, bro?
Yep.
Um, I typically, on our capital and safe funds, do like a 14-month budget sometime in the spring, and then a five-year one also, and just to try and keep a handle on where, you know, that's money that goes away in big chunks, like a $90,000 bus, $300,000 worth of one-to-one computers, and so, with that, we're just gonna keep a list of considerations for the future, so we have some ideas of what's going on and things that we're actively planning to do, so. If you just look at the left-hand column, those would be our summer projects. We've already started baseball fence, softball fence, and scoreboard, we approved the scoreboard and fencing tonight already. We've already bought some additional cameras to get in our hallways and shop areas, and we've ordered some restroom partitions, and I'm not even gonna tell you which building that's for, might be for one of Mike's, I'm not sure. And then the next section are things that we just want you to, to look over tonight. Obviously, the parking lot, we just had a short discussion on, and the bids may decide that for me. As you can see, I was a little surprised by the estimate. But going down the list, the parking lot at the SAC Elementary needs some patching and some crack sealed, and people who did the work last time were in and looked at it, and said they would do that for $12,500. And we're probably looking at a larger project up there sometime in the next three to five years to probably put an overlay on that. I asked him to price that, just so we had an idea, and it's just under 200,000, 170-something to overlay that, so. Put some of those things in your memory. We've been doing LED projects now for three or four summers. We spend 25 to 40,000 and get additional LED lights in every building. It's the right thing to do, and it saves us money in the general fund. Men American for our SAC buildings gives us a great rebate, so we do quite a bit up there for, for less money. The City of Walleye has a small matching fund that we take advantage of, and Lakeview will pay for it, so. Steve's still working out the specifics, but we're thinking the middle school library, maybe. The gymnasium at the SAC Elementary, we would retube that all to LED tubes, which is a very inexpensive project after rebates. And the next consideration is, this gymnasium has, has lights on pretty much 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, six days a week, so we're looking at putting LED lights in there, and then we would move these lights, because they're not that old, to the Walleye gymnasium. We probably do most of that ourselves, and we're using that more and more for a few middle school events since we've moved wrestling here, and major complaint last year, we resisted it was dark, and so.
This gym?
The Walleye.
Walleye.
And so, some of these, I think 20 of these 26 lights, we've done it out, gym over there, these have been replaced, so. Waiting to get all those details ironed out, but that's kind of the plan, so. We're planning to get work done. The fence around the property at the SAC Elementary with color on the entire property, we need to pay some attention to that and get that straightened up and tied up and fixed up, and so, that would be that project. Concrete floors in the bus barns, all of our bus barns just have rock floors and dirt floors, and so, we were looking at either doing this ourself, or we would prepare it ourselves and then hire a contractor to just pour it. We think we can do it pretty reasonably priced that way. That would be a good upgrade for the transportation department. SAC Elementary, we've been putting new doors in all the way around the building, and the bid for 21,000 would finish the entire north side and do another set on the south side. I think we would be done with the exception of a couple single doors and another set of double doors, is that sound right, Mike?
Yeah, then we'd be finished with doors there.
Yeah, we'd be pretty well in good shape there. So, that's been kind of a three or four-year project, what we've been, 20 or 25,000, and that's it. Been money well spent, because I think, you know, energy efficiency.
Yeah, and doors are original, and they're just not efficient, and they're rusted out at the bottom, so.
Anytime you can save money on heating and cooling, it's a good, good much thing, so.
The next project would be here at the high school. Last year, we did the outside set of doors on the east side, and then you walk in about 15 feet and there's another set. This would make that set match the outdoor set, and so, and that also makes that kind of a secure area, because we actually have the door entry system on the inside set of doors. So, that's that project. Mislanious equipment and repairs, there's always things that pop up. The two that came to mind is, we need some work in this gymnasium on the lifts for the baskets and the safety straps and cables and those. We did Walleye, or SAC a year ago, and we need to get this one done. And then, there's a small project on the middle school roof that needs done. Those two add up to about 15,000, but we know there'll be a couple other things pop up. And then we'll do some sidewalks, and I know there's a set of steps we need to replace at the middle school, so we'll do some miscellaneous concrete projects. If you remember, about a year ago, we had a gentleman here, I think he came to a board meeting about the bus antenna. John Zeeman in SAC has an antenna that has our bus radio equipment on it, and he was, he's getting out of the business and was going to take the antenna down, and we were gonna have to relocate. It turns out that a local farmer's gonna take over the tower and has offered us the same rate, so it'd be my recommendation, we just let that happen. But at the same time, we do need to upgrade our equipment to the newer digital rainbow stuff, so it'll be a small charge for that.
And will John hook that up for us, or?
No, actually, the company out of Spencer that does our, when he went out of business, is Alphawireless, a few years ago, we went with Alphawireless, they're still gonna take care of everything, of course. Tuck Wayne, we've got two bids from two companies, and all four of our buildings need work. Three more than the SAC Elementary, but just a small amount of work there right now, but depending on which bid you look at, I think they could spend years on our three buildings, or the three, so.
That looks like 17, 18, 19, you got that now for all of them.
Yeah, it's just a project we need to start and keep working on, so. Classroom furniture, there's always stuff that the teachers request, and then it goes through the principals and into our office, and so that'll. The next three items, we talked about the LP, the sander's not a big deal until somebody falls, and then the phone system. The, you'll just have to give us feedback on the phone system sometime after you think about it. I mean, it works most of the time. They're old in all four buildings, but they don't improve scores, you know, if you spend money on them, so.
No.
It's just one of those things. For a while, we were concerned because the systems that were in this building and the Walleye building, they couldn't find parts for anymore. The company was out of business, but since then, somebody's bought that company, and we can get parts again, so it's not as big of a dire need, but at some time, we probably need to upgrade when we get into the 20th century, but.
Is that, is that 75K, is that for all buildings?
That would do all five buildings on one voice-over-IP system with the transfer calls to all five buildings. Probably do what they call lowest-cost routing for long distance, so. There would be some general fund savings if we did that. I don't wanna lead you to believe it's gonna pay for itself, but, but there would be some.
That's, that's a, an expense that, it's kind of like computers, you gotta keep upgrading that stuff.
Yeah, it's, I know in this building, I was here when they put it in, it was 96. I think they did Walleye the year before, unless Mike knows, I haven't really found anybody that knows how old the phones are in the SAC Elementary or middle school.
The phone store just came in, it hasn't been all that long, so, it'd probably be our newest phones.
Yeah, they're, they're a Meridian system by Northstar, and that's actually the system that we took out of this building when we put in these, so I don't, it's not new technology by all stretch.
So, John, the parking lot sander, would that be for SAC or?
We would put that in one of our pickups, and it would be for all of our facilities. It, it just came up because we usually hire Orches.
Right.
To do our parking lots up there, and the city's here, and usually, we don't even get charged. But this year, the sand, the day we needed the sander, Orches was busy, and City of Lakeview broke down.
Wow.
And so, we thought, you know, are we to a point with four campuses where we could probably, and we already have a pickup, that we should maybe just spend $4,000 or $5,000 and have our own, that we can, before ballgame, if it's icy, we go down the street, you're in front of the SAC Elementary, so somebody doesn't fall, or?
Yeah, I don't think $5,000 is a lot of money, I just.
No, I'm not gonna spend $20,000 and all that, but if we find a good used one on sale somewhere that'll fit in a pickup, we'll probably consider it. And then you can look down the next list of things we know are upcoming. Then on the right side is just things that aren't facility-related, but that we do take out of that fund and we know are upcoming.
So, John, do you wanna, do you wanna motion to approve this list?
You know, there's really nothing on there that's expensive enough, other than the parking lot.
Right.
And I would need a motion, but I would like to hear if there's anything on there you don't want us to do, that would be the.
Can I make a suggestion of something that might be on there? I know, since I was coaching baseball, there's a lip on the infield that every year just keeps getting worse and worse, and I've tried to roll it and roll it, you know, I've soaked it overnight and then tried to roll it.
Grass? Yeah, cut it out.
Yeah, I had a company come from Webster City last year, I gave a quote, it was like $8,000 to cut the lip, and they said they'd do, they would, how they would do it is they would strip the whole infield and then they would relay it and irrigate it so that the water would, would run off to the, the sides. So, I don't know if that's something we'd wanna look into.
Well, it's probably actually a safety issue at some time.
Yeah, and I talked to Tyler about it last year, and he said, that's it. So, I, I mean, I can reach out to that company and get, just get a quote for it.
I think we have John do that, if we want to do it.
Okay.
We have a bid on the phone system yet, because we just pulled one out of work, and ours was $55,000, and this place put a lot bigger than that.
We've talked to four or five vendors, we have not put it out to bid. Thanks for the good news, though.
I bought a die when I told this wasn't a bid.
I don't have any issues, like, as regards the parking lot, I mean, with the rest of the projects, I don't see any issues with any of those.
Good deal. Anything else?
Well, a question I might have, and we can talk about it, I think, because the parking lot project is on, so if we came back to this next meeting next month, what would be helpful for us to bring back for information? Because part of what these guys are talking about, three of us weren't sitting at this table, which is the.
I'm not a sure table.
I wasn't, the only thing, reason I remember, because I remember seeing in the paper, and there was a committee.
Yeah, that's all I remember.
In the committee. Yeah, because if that's what the board would like, then what we need to know, we, I think it's John and me, need to know, is what would you like us to be working on, and what would be that information from the time when Dr. Feeney was here that you'd like us to bring back?
From what I remember, they had outlines of all the buildings and what we, at that time, thought needed to be done, and I know there was an addition on this side of the building, and I think the parking lot was actually still mostly there.
Awesome.
But not saying that that's what we need now, but, but that would certainly help. I mean, if there was an addition on there and we saw that there was some, because I know there were some classrooms in it, there was a, there was actually a multipurpose room, sort of like a gym, but not a gym, on it also, and.
Like a cafeteria?
Well, I think that was, the multipurpose room was the cafeteria, the gym, you know, not like a gym, but.
Something like the elephant sack city, too, the, the.
The auditorium.
Oh, yeah, that was over there, though.
And that was, that was like a phase two, after everything else was.
There was, there was a lot done in this building. I mean, they were gonna take part of this building down and add some new, but, which seemed like a.
That was when the auditorium would go in after the, this first part was added to the west.
Right.
And the old part was down or gone.
Yeah.
Then they put that auditorium on that end, and I think that's where that auditorium was gonna be.
That's the oldest part of the building over there. That's the oldest part of the building over there, so they talked about taking that down and adding the auditorium in there. But for some reason, I just think that most of the parking lot was still there even with all that done.
Yeah, I think so too. I don't know, but I hate to even speculate.
Right.
I'm not saying that that's what it is, but it would be helpful to at least see what the initial ones were, maybe, you know, just to kinda give an idea. Cause I think the rest of it would come, I mean, I think the rest of the discussion comes more from what we end up with on our goals. I mean, as far as long range, that kinda stuff, but I just would, you know, if the initial suggested, I don't wanna go there, suggested plan maybe doesn't interfere with that, then maybe it's a different story. You know, maybe, maybe it's something we can't...
And the other piece, and that would just be the legislators' actions the last couple of years. None of us would've predicted a percent and a quarter and two and a quarter, so three and a half percent total for two years and no budget set for following, no allocation. That, and I'm not encouraging you to, I heard you listen, I'm not trying to push you in some direction on there, but kinda keeping that also on the other side of your brain when you're thinking about all this, because John and I talk about this, you know, and that is very unpredictable. But you almost have to think on that conservative side because we probably wouldn't have guessed that we'd have gotten two years in a row of a percent and a quarter and two and a quarter. I don't, I don't think across the state of Iowa educators nor meaning you guys and board members as well would've guessed that's what it would look like in two years. And I think now what scares schools is that now it looks like a trend, you know, and now it looks like Royce is gonna find out late and Royce is gonna be much less than what those prior years had been. So then what does that say to us and what position are we in? Because in another year, we won't have TLC positions to rely on either. But then does that say anything about buildings and structures and programs and that sort of thing? And you're gonna say, well, what do you mean? Or, I don't know, I'm just saying, keep that piece out there in your head because it might be easier for you not to think of it than it is for us to consider that.
Well, I think we need to do some kinda strategy session or something concerning our whole facilities, whether, whether, whatever it is.
Talk more about that and if I said to you, I'm not sure what you mean.
I, I think we need to look at facilities in general. What, it doesn't make sense to tear up the track in SAC because that's, that's the only track we have. It doesn't make sense to, to do some things because those are the only things we have. I, I think we need to look at, at the facilities, where the kids are at within our district, whether they would all be in the southern, the northern half or the southern half and start looking at that kinda stuff and start doing some things to our buildings. I mean, Chris is right, that side of the building over here is gonna need some work. We all know the middle school needs some work. We all know that the building in, in wallet needs some work. Of all the buildings, I would say the Mike's is probably in the best shape. We, we just need to prioritize where we're gonna go with stuff. And I don't know where we start. I personally think we need to start and look at kids and look at, at that kinda thing, you know, can we, can we put, I don't know, I don't think we can put K six from both sides in the building in SAC City, just looking at numbers, I don't think it can happen. So we just have to look at some things and try to prioritize some stuff. I don't know, am I out of line?
No, I agree, cause I also think that we need some input from the administration to say, okay, what's the appropriate grade levels to put together in a building?
I would agree with that also.
The kids coming up, you know, would it make more sense to have three equal sized sections instead of one really large to really little? You know, does it make it easier for you guys to help put teachers in the right classrooms if they're all together? You know, how many teachers do we have dragging back and forth all the time? You know, they could have more classroom time? Those would be just some of the other things, but I agree, looking at the whole picture and figuring out what we have and what we want to get to or what's the best for the students.
And I think that, you know, in the best case scenario would be to put K twelve under one roof. I don't think that's gonna happen. When you look at all the bond issues that have failed in the last...
I mean, I don't think, we don't have the taxpayers to even start that situation.
So what's the next, what's the next best scenario? Is it two? You know, I don't know. What is, where's the age split? Which, I don't know how that...
It would be easy enough. I'm thinking of the administrator group for us to sit down and say, well, if there's one building, we're not gonna consider that. If there's two buildings, here's three different arrangements, any of which would be workable and would be okay, but they might be a transition to another set of grade groups over time.
Yes, I, I think that's where we need to go.
Because no matter what, it doesn't matter what size school you're in. If you're in Johnston or if you're in East Att County, keeping your smallest, your youngest kids a little bit closer to home, and I mean youngest by four or five, maybe six years old, so that'd be your preschool, your kindergarten, your first grade kids, as close to home as you can and not having them move and ride on buses very far away, just makes more sense because of their age and the program that you can offer. So maybe that is, that it looks one way, but then there might be two other arrangements that could work that way as well. Now, it could happen if you have a two building district, that this building has a preschool, I have to use the right name, preschool through first grade and there's a preschool through first grade in SAC. And then all of them, we start bringing kids together and that's all one place and then what's here might be seven, twelve. So it might be a seven, twelve and a preschool through first grade and, you know, however that might look, but there's a lot of ways. I bet if Mike and I sat down and I bet in an hour, we could give you five options for what this might look like and any one of them might work and be okay to have happen. The only thing it does when we start talking about this is that panics our community.
Oh, yeah.
And so then you have to be braced for, this is just, we're just brainstorming.
Right. It's just being proactive, trying to get a couple ideas so that if it's two years from now, we have no funding, we know what we're gonna do.
And I think the scenario needs to be, when we think about our current structure, a three building structure and possibly a two building structure. I mean, and, and maybe it's not, maybe she don't jump into thing right away and go to two, two buildings right away, maybe it's three buildings and you kinda ease into that thing where, where you don't have to...
Well, you're gonna have transition times if you, if you talk about a building and you think about a part that's like at this facility, if that's gonna have to come down, then you're not gonna be able to take your kid...
It's gonna take a year or two to roll it up, yeah.
Right, you're just gonna button it up with what you have and then that's just part of the transition until X happens. We also have to determine what we value, if we value auditoriums or if we value, I wish that wasn't on, locker rooms and practice facilities and whatever, because we do have a lot of gyms in our district and someone could argue, well, this gym's better than that gym. But when we just have access to activities for a school our size, we really are pretty lucky to have access to the numbers of gyms we do and to, to accommodate school activities, but then the things that are really not school, but closely related like A U and USA and those sorts of things that help our programs, that we accommodate for them because we have a lot of big space.
Sure.
And so do we wanna not have access to some of those as well? And do we need classrooms and different, different classrooms than we have right now? I don't, I don't know if the answer to that, but this will just make the community nervous and there will be some people who will come to you and to me and to John and say, well, I understand you're gonna tear down X.
No.
No, no, no. But when we start this, that will be one of the things we'll have to do is put out little fires.
That's gonna happen from what we just talked about.
I'll guarantee you tomorrow, somebody will ask me.
Yeah, and you'll have to, and you'll have to just weather that, but you know, that's, that's the way people are gonna be and that's what's gonna happen. Part of what you said, I, you don't, you don't know the right answer. I'm not sure anybody knows the right answer. I don't think anybody could sit here and say, this is what we need to do, other than building a school, one school. You know, that'd be the perfect role.
And the best input we can get is from the administration, I mean, you guys, and Phil Lakefish.
I just visited Fort Dodge today for some academic stuff and I, I just know from talking to the principal over there and having to move an elementary in two weeks because their other one, they said they couldn't use. I wouldn't want ESAC to be in a situation in any of their buildings to not have a plan and all of a sudden something would happen and I don't know what that happened over there, but they were moved, they were literally moving in two weeks to try and get ready one whole elementary building. And I'd hate, you know, I would hate for you, you know, as a board, to not have some type of plan of what you might wanna do at that point. And they did well.
The first thing we can do is try to dig out what's happening.
Well, yeah, I'll tell you, I'll tell you from experience that everything that we've talked about here has been done. Now, it was five years ago or maybe even six, I don't remember when, but all of that stuff that we talked about was, was done at some time and obviously everything changes.
I still got the, that, there was, in two thousand and eleven and twelve, there was a group of board, committee.
Scary committee.
And faculty and administration, there's probably thirty total people on that committee, toured every facility except our Flex Ed Center and our grounds and probably met, oh, every six or eight weeks for maybe eighteen months. And the, no consensus was reached and no facility plan was drawn. The purpose of that committee was to develop a facility plan to suit, serve this district for twenty years. And one of the committee members sat right here and said, we don't know what education will look like in five years, let alone ten or twenty, and there's no way we can do this. And that kinda became the consensus of that group. Surely after that or before that, the one cent voted, or the one dollar voted, that all failed and that kinda crumbled then at that point.
Yeah, that's where it kinda stopped.
And those plans were, that we've all talked about tonight, were developed in that timeframe.
And to add to what John said, the guy who said what he said wasn't being negative.
No.
He, he was talking about when he was in school, which was a little longer than twenty years ago, but you know, where it, where it had, where it had come from when he was in school to now, you know, he couldn't fathom that, so he was thinking, how do we, how do we have any idea where we're gonna be in twenty years? You know, so I think twenty years is too long, honestly.
You know, you say that, but then you look, if we started something tonight, it'd be five years to get a whole lot done, three to five.
You have to do it stages.
You know, and so, it's tough to figure that out.
Right. And I think five years is a much better number than twenty.
Anyway, that's my history lesson.
So whatever, if you can find something. Just your conversation, cause I have some milk. Okay. Yeah. We can start on this.
Yeah, the only thing on there that's high dollar is that phone system. Let's see what these other bids come in and what we decide in a month and if we decide to do, I look at Beth, cause she's off with the phone business, but if we end up not doing the three hundred thousand and we decide maybe this is a chance to do the phone, cause we've got some money, maybe that's, we won't do anymore yet. Okay?
All right.
All right, moving on to the affirmative action plan.
Yep, you have it, you worked at it, wouldn't have been very thankful for that.
Yeah.
John, if you remember when we had our site visit last year, we had an affirmative action plan, but it was written when I had last been a superintendent for the previous site visit, so it wasn't correct. This one is significantly different than that one actually because, you know, in these seven years, a lot of things have changed. So your only choice is if you, to be perfectly honest about this, your only input can really be whether they're typos or things, generally their spelling, otherwise what's in here has to be against you. And the data is accurate for East Att County schools.
I thought it was interesting to review it, our data in here.
Yeah.
Just to, just to kinda see where we...
Yeah, and part of that is, you know, it's not like, it's not like we're not trying or we don't want males to be teachers or females to be bus drivers, you know? It's just part of...
Sure, and part of our data really is just reflective of our county as well, you know?
Yep.
So I would appreciate a, I can send it to the DE.
So what Barb said, you know?
I guess I'll second.
In favor of bringing the affirmative action plan as written.
There you go.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. A job description, seems like we just have one.
Yep, she should have a superintendent job description. This comes from Iowa Association of School Boards. Makes you tired looking at it, doesn't it?
Where does it start?
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, you have to work back. It's after the, it's right after the affirmative action plan.
I'm in trouble here.
The one thing kinda that I would make in here is that there are a lot of things that the superintendent's responsible for, but it doesn't say exclusively that the superintendent delegates that or the superintendent works with the principals to get that taken care of, but that's implied that that's what happens. The job is that it, in some cases, it's a lot of over study, you know, that things happen or get done. And when there are complaints that don't get remedied at the lowest level because we send those to the persons of the academic or school related, classroom related, goes to the teacher first and not the principal and them to me, but most often it gets taken care of prior to whatever coming to me. And if they come to me first, I ask for them to go back to the classroom teacher, if I can't talk to the teacher about this, then you're gonna need to talk to the principal about it. It's very seldom and I think principals can tell you that when something comes directly to me that's never gone to ground, there's some occasionally, but not very often, I say, fine, okay, I'll listen and in this circumstance, I will listen to what you're having to say because I know enough about it to know that it probably won't work for it to go that route or they've tried that before or it's something so serious, we just need to get it taken care of right now. And the same thing would happen with classified staff, with their concerns or whatever, so it's transportation, not those really responsible for taking care of that. Steve for buildings and grounds and Patty for food service, so the bottom line is, I don't do all of these things, but I'm responsible for seeing that these things happen.
Any questions?
I'll make a question.
George, okay. In favor of referring the superintendent's job description?
Aye.
On to policy five oh seven point two regarding education.
The policies that you have come from our Association of School Boards, you know, they're updated because of some administrative law changes at the Iowa Department of Education level. So Kit and I have gone through these and I left the changes in them so you can sort of get the feel, get, you can begin to get the feel first, so what is it that administrative law piece look like? She is recommending that you approve those policies as they're written. The only place that I would ask for your input, and it's actually called page forty-seven, if you look down at the bottom. And in the middle of that page, there's a bold item as well as italicized item, it's a bullet and it says in parentheses, student maintains self-administration record, then right behind it, no, this bullet is recommended, but it's not required. She and I talked for quite a long time about that and we really felt like we could talk ourselves into one or the other and had no choice. At first I was just gonna take it out and then I thought, no, because if there's some sort of action that the board wants to have taken on this, what we would do is probably leave it in, but that would be the place where I would just say, do you have any particular feedback on that?
So you would leave it in, but we would, we would keep the records ourselves here too?
So it says student maintains a self-administration record, so that would just be, we would just notify the student and when the parent guardian signs this document right here, that bullet would, we'd make sure that the parent was aware of that bullet, that that's what the expectation was. It's a younger student and it might be the school nurse that helps them keep that record, but that, that would be just part of what the expectation is, is if you're gonna have these things at school... going to have these things at school and administer these, self-administer them, there needs to be a student actor with it.
And they need to keep that?
Yes.
Well, I'm all for us having less responsibilities in this area. So, yeah, I'd say...
I have a feeling we'll keep it over anyway.
That's what I was kind of thinking, but if you have it in there that it's, it's up to them to keep their record, then if we somehow don't have it...
Or it's theirs.
Or we, yeah, there's a glitch in this.
Right. So then I'd make a motion to approve five oh seven point two.
All those in favor of bringing policy five oh seven point two?
Aye.
Yep, Ellen Waters, our assistant dance team coach, has written her letter of resignation. So I'd like you to accept that, please.
Make a motion to accept that and thank her for her service.
Also, in favor of bringing her resignation. And contracts.
Dave Waggy has already started his job and is well into the season that week. He's always our flex person when it comes to, you know, there's four middle school track. And almost always, we need him, but we also, he could live just fine and we could, so he was true when there aren't as many middle school track kids. So he's actually started his job, but that was slightly after the last board meeting. So I'd recommend Dave Waggy as, as an assistant on middle school track coach. Steph Kelsey and Carrie Icorn has junior class sponsors and also football concessions, and that's fundraising for junior class. Lance Willhell has fifth grade English Language Arts and Social Studies. We had seven applicants and we interviewed three for that position. And then we are able to add tonight, I think John's got the information, and that would be assistant softball coach will be Whitney McHewbert.
One thousand eighty-eight.
And then we will have a JVR softball coach, and that job will be split between Steve Nitsman and Whitney. Steve doing the home games and Whitney doing the away games.
Steve's contract is a half of the, or half of the JV contract, which comes out to one thousand forty-nine.
And then she would have a...
The eighteen eighty-eight includes both her JV and proportion of her JV.
Okay, okay. Well, and remembering, she's on year one of the schedule, the, and he would be on year, resilient, I don't know where that's, so we're all, so we are happy to have that coaching situation resolved. So, and that was just finished up this weekend, so that's why it wasn't in your board patent. So those are the recommendations for contracts.
Any questions on those or can I take a motion to approve all contracts with the addition of...
So, aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dave for May's meeting?
May seventeenth, May sixteenth, seventeenth, that'll work for everybody.
Six o'clock at...
Sorry, I can't read.
There are some new policies that just came out Friday from ISB that I need to take a look at, but more than likely, there'll be some policies we want to talk to you about graduation requirement and the addition of a science course to the requirements for graduation will bring you back to you at that time. And then I had written a note when we were talking about projects and that sort of saying, what do you mean for future planning? And then you guys gave me some ideas, so, and we're on job descriptions here, which went, they're getting narrowed down on that. Shoot, there was something I thought of when we...
Anything else?
Oh, hopefully, that's the contract. Write that down, please.
If we have that, then we'll have contracts also.
That is all. Make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.